Want to call the meeting to order. East Green Bush Central School District School Board for December 1st. Good to see a lot of folks in the, in the crowd. This evening's attendance, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Comerkey will not be here. And with that, if you could please rise and join me in the, if you're able to. Thank you very much. And the first order of business this evening is our Student Council Representatives, Ryan and is Emma here? Yes. Okay. How you guys doing?
Good, thank you very much. So as you saw when we walked in, we just finished decorating Columbia for winter and the holidays. We had a great time. We had pizza, we had music, it was awesome.
So this Saturday at Walmart, we have our next two holiday events. We have bell ringing from nine to one and we will also be shopping inside for Adopt a Family and we're doing two families this year.
And in late December, probably the last week of school before we leave for winter break, we're going to be partnering with Ethnic Coalition to raise money through a PJ Day event for families in shelters. And finally, with winter already here and snow coming, we, on behalf of the students, I'd like to say that we really appreciate those intermittent days off without virtual work. As you can all imagine, you know, especially when like midterms are coming up, we have tests, so yeah, that's what I'd say, thank you very much.
We appreciate you expressing the views of the student body, Ryan.
You have a future as a board member or superintendent with your diplomacy, Ryan, just saying we want real snow days.
Thanks, Emma, thanks, Ryan. So this evening, we have a very special presentation. It is our Mary Vander Z Special Educator of the Year Award presented by the Special Needs Parent Support Group and the Special Ed Department. And Mr. Simons, you want to?
Yes, each year annually, for several years now, the Pupil Personnel Services Department has sponsored an award known as the Mary P. Vander Z Special Educator of the Year Award. I'm pleased to introduce our Interim Assistant Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Bill Coyle, who is also our retired Assistant Director of Pupil Personnel Services, who's been serving in an interim capacity to help us out. Bill, you're on.
Thank you, and thank you, board members, for having us tonight. As Mr. Simon said, each year, the Special Needs Parent Support Group solicits nominations from the East Green Bush community for a very special award, a recognition that we call the Mary P. Vander Z Special Educator of the Year Award. This year, we had seventeen staff members nominated for the award, which I think may be a record high number for us. So the Special Needs Parent Support Group co-facilitators, Catherine Maschel and Michelle McDonald, Michelle is with us tonight in the audience, wave. As well as Kara and Molly and myself reviewed those nominations and decided that the award should go to several different people. One is a team of educators from Belltop Elementary School, many of whom, if not all, I see here in the audience, thanks for coming. And the other is for Tammy Wager. So at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce the awardees and my most excellent helpers over here, Evan, Matthew and Jacob are going to hand out certificates to each of you. So when I call your name, stand up and be recognized and get your certificate. Let's start with Tammy Wager. Tammy? John Rivera. Special education teacher at Belltop School. Tracy Cornell, did I see Tracy in the back? Yes, Tracy Cornell. Tracy's a regular education teacher at Belltop Elementary School and started out her career with us as a special educator. Mary Ruth Baranka, did Mary Ruth come tonight? There she is. Mary Ruth is a teaching assistant at Belltop. Lori Owens, there's Lori. Lori is an Academic Intervention Services teacher at Belltop. And Denise Boniface. Denise is a speech therapist at Belltop and other locations where we need her in the district. Gwen Rudnick, is Gwen here? There's Gwen. Occupational therapist. And Catherine Beal, our physical therapist. For many years, Tammy Wager was the Pupil Personnel Department Secretary. Tammy was usually the first point of contact for parents and their children when they came to see us. She was always very welcoming, very kind, very understanding, very professional and very patient with our people. She kept us organized. She helped us all navigate the intricacies of our various data systems, not an easy task. She's been instrumental over the last couple of years in orienting new administrators to the Pupil Services Department and new support staff. In fact, even after retiring last August, Tammy has continued to answer our very many questions without hesitation, and we could not have functioned without her all these years. She's very deserving of a recognition for that. Now, John Rivera is a past recipient of the Mary P. Vander Z Special Educator of the Year Award. I think that was about ten years ago, John. And the only staff member in the twenty-some-odd years we've been doing this to have been recognized twice. Great achievement, John. In addition, he's been nominated in the meantime almost every year by somebody. He is well-respected by his, the parents he works with and his colleagues. And so have several of the other members of the Belltop team over the years. I think all of this attests to their ongoing dedication, their professionalism, and what they bring to the district every single day that they come to work. I've had the pleasure of working with all of them over the years, and I can say from personal experience, they are each very dedicated, very hardworking and very deserving of recognition. Now, I'd like to introduce the parents who nominated our Belltop team, Sharon and Aylin, and their children, Evan, Matthew and Jacob, who were my assistants here tonight. And I'd like to invite them to come up and talk to the board about why they chose to nominate this team. Sharon and Aylin, come on up, guys, come on up.
Hi, my name is Evan. And these are my teachers from last year, some of them still work with me this year. Mrs. Cornell and Mr. Rivera made me feel respected for what I knew. Mrs. Owens, Mrs. Boniface, Mrs. Rudnick, and Mrs. Beal, and Mrs. Baranka made me feel comfortable at the points I was at. I could not have gotten where I am today with, with all of the, with all of these teachers helping me. I am really happy I got to meet them and came to Belltop. You really deserve this award.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Congratulations to the teachers and all the nominees. That was Evan's thoughts scribbled by Mom and Dad, which is pretty typical. I just want to take just a couple minutes for you all to understand how very difficult it was for us to pick up our family and move from Dutchess County last year in the middle of COVID, once we had exhausted years and years of private and public schools that could not assist our children. We have found a shining beacon of light here at East Green Bush, and I can't thank you enough for all that you're doing every day to make sure that our kids are getting what they need and that the teachers have what they need to give our kids. The respect and the gratitude that we have for this particular team is unbounding. It just really is so incredible that, that the patience and the time and the dedication to giving a child the space that they need and the, and the tools that they need and the adaptations that they need and the assistive tech eval is just incredible. We are looking at our, in our family, at a new child that we haven't seen in, in forever. And it would not have been possible without this amazing team. Mrs. Cornell, Mr. Rivera, Mrs. Beal, Mrs. Rudnick, Mrs. Baranka, Mrs. Owens, Mrs. Gibbs is no longer with us, with the district, but you will never, ever be able to sum up the undying devotion that we feel towards each and every one of you and for making this kid feel like the kid that's got it all going on. Thank you so much.
Does anybody else want to talk? Thank you very much, that was great. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight, we're all set.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation, and I, did I see Molly come in? Is she here? There she is, hi Molly, good to see you. Wonderful to see you here again, and I hope things are going well. Just thank you for those kind words, really makes us feel good as a board and as a community when we can hear that we're doing our best for every child and your child too. So thank you for coming to our community and sharing your perspective, and thank you to the staff for making them feel welcome and like every child here at the district, how important that is to this board, to this community, that every child is respected and every child has a place in this community. So thank you very much and we appreciate it, and we appreciate all the work that's done, the parents, the staff are being involved in making this a special place for everybody. So thank you, and it's always great to hear those words. So really touches me to, you'll be participating in this kind of event, so thank you, and I'm glad you're all here today, so. And to the kids, thanks for coming, it's good to see you too, so. All right, so we'll, we'll move on to agenda, you're welcome to stay if, and participate in our meeting this evening. But again, thank you for all for coming this evening and sharing of yourselves, so we appreciate it. So with that, we'll move to the other business of the board, unless something, board members have any other comments to make before we move on? Anyone? Okay. So the next item is our, our minutes of our meeting for eleven seventeen twenty-one. Any comments, revisions for the minutes? Kathleen, yes?
I just have to mention that under attendance, my name got left off.
Okay, so.
I was there, you can see that I seconded things, but I just got left off in the attendance.
No problem. Michelle, make sure you share some of those pictures with Mr. Adam for the website. All right, thank you. So with that, if there's no other corrections or comments, we'll make that change and make sure Kathleen is present, Kathleen. With that, in a motion to approve the minutes? Frank, I need a second. Mark, call those in favor. Approved. Next on our agenda is the board forum. I'll start at mine left with Mark, anything? Good. Jennifer, anything? Kathleen? Nothing right now? Joanne? And Frank? And Cheryl? And I'm, I'm good. We'll now move to our first public forum of the evening. Resident students, employees and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Nevertheless, the board do not directly respond to system concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed that visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may consider defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited would heal declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this time? No? Okay. We'll then move to our reports and presentations of the superintendent schools. Mr. Simons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buno. The, the board and the district administration has made a commitment each year, but particularly this year, as kids are transitioning back to full-time in-person learning to ensure that we are monitoring student attendance and also putting in place supports and interventions that might be necessary to help kids transition back to school and attend school on a regular basis. That becomes complicated as the COVID-19 issues continue to face the community, but we do continue to track attendance. Mr. Harkin gave a pre-port at the last board meeting regarding the efforts at the high school, and tonight we invite Goth Middle School Principal Jill Barker to give her report on the efforts to address attendance at Goth Middle School. This is Barker.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Simons. As Mr. Simon says, we are paying a lot of attention to students as they re-enter back into five days a week, in-school person instructions. What we've been doing each week is talking about attendance and taking a look at our attendance data every week. Every two weeks, we review this data at our instructional support team meeting and we talk about students that we feel need to have additional interventions, and that may mean a meeting with the student, it may mean a meeting with the parents, I mean, may mean a visit to the home. So as you can see in the data in front of you, we took a look at the total of Goth Middle School as a whole and the attendance, we compared Q1 this year to Q1 last year. It's difficult to really compare the two, and then our model is very different this year, being five days in-person versus hybrid model, where fifty percent of the students were coming every other day. And we had many students on a remote model as well. So you'll see that there's a skew in the numbers in terms of, it looks like there's a lot more absenteeism this year, tardiness this year than last year, but it is hard to compare the two. But what I will tell you is that, as we did last year, we're paying very close attention to what is happening with our student population and what may be causing them to not come to school, and also what may be causing them to be tardy to school. As, you know, with the COVID-19 situation that we're faced with, many students are not taking the bus, which means there's a significant increase in parent drop-off, and with that comes an increase in tardies. So we have seen a rise in that. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we did implement, because we were seeing an increase in tardiness, we did implement a parent sign-in, we are re-looking at that as a potential intervention, but with, with COVID-19 concerns, we don't want to have numerous amounts of parents waiting in line outside and not only want one parent investable at this time. So we are communicating with parents about the importance of getting their child here on time. Some of the things that we are seeing is that, you know, with, with COVID-19, many students are staying home with symptoms, which has increased our absenteeism. If, normally, they may come to school with a sniffle or slight cold, but now they're staying home, so that certainly contributes to our increase in absenteeism. So what we're also doing too is looking at, you know, different ways that we can help students who have to be out because they're being quarantined or are struggling to get to school because they're having a hard time readjusting. So we've offered a number of interventions, and thank you very much to the Board of Education supplying us with the ability to do this. We are offering, students have been quarantined tutoring if they're still struggling, if they've had to be quarantined. In some cases, we've had students unfortunately be quarantined on numerous occasions, which has prevented them from coming to school. And they do get behind, so we've offered tutoring in those cases where we need to do that, we've offered them some time in school. We have after-school homework club, Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays, so we're allowing students to make up work and providing additional support for our students from that perspective. And so we do have a lot of interventions in place for our students who are struggling due to being quarantined or just struggling to come to school on a regular basis. We have tapped into Amaro Trembley, who is our new social worker for the district, to go out and make a lot of home visits with our, either our guidance counselor or with our assistant principals. So we've made numerous calls at home, parents have called us, asking us to help them because their child is struggling maybe to get out of bed or come to school, or struggling to get back to that routine. So we're working with families very closely to provide them the supports that they need to encourage their child to come to school, and working with different plans of action to help them feel comfortable in getting back into the swing of things. So we've had home visits, we've had called CPS when we need to, we put kids on pins when we need to, and parents oftentimes are asking for that support because they can't get their child to do what they need to do. So just really, the summary of all of this is that this is something that we are paying very close attention to on a weekly basis, and we are providing all of the necessary supports, interventions that we can to support our school and our, our community, our parents, and as most importantly, our students. So, you know, I, again, appreciate all the supports and the financial support you've given us to be able to provide the programs that you have, so we can continue to provide this service. Any questions?
I'm just curious, for the students that are out, are you noticing that they are taking advantage of the tutoring option? Because I know a lot of these middle schoolers, because of their age until recently, you know, couldn't be vaccinated, so we're missing a lot.
Some are taking advantage of it. Fortunately, because we've had the three days of after-school program, we have a lot of families that are taking advantage of that. We are full every, pretty much every day with students, so we, and if they're not doing it, our guidance counselors are calling them down, and we're encouraging our students to sign up. If we, we were looking at the grades regularly, and so we have those three days, we can offer support, and a lot of kids will stay all three days. We've also had kids that are, need some more support than, than that, so we've offered them to go with Linda Pavick, who's in our resource, or in-school suspension room, she'll work with kids, catch them up. So we've had some parents who have taken advantage of the tutoring, but we haven't had a significant amount of that because we have so many other interventions in place, which is really nice. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Jill, have you had a chance to look at some of the quarter one data in terms of pass fail rates or course failures and how kids are performing versus the attendance data?
We haven't looked at it in great, we've looked at it, but we have to dig a little bit deeper. We do know, you know, our guidance counselors had just polled that data and we're starting that analysis right now. So we have begun that process, and we do this every quarter anyway. So then what we do is we look at, you know, will have they taken advantage of our interventions? Have they gone to homework club? Do we need to go do a parent visit? Do we need to call, reach out to the parent, ask them what supports they need? But absolutely, that is something that we are working on closely, our guidance counselors are summing that up for me right now, but we do correlate the two, absolutely, because obviously attendance has a role in performance, for sure. The social motion of peace too is another, you know, factor that has played into effect more than ever this year, so in the past, we kind of have to meet kids where they're at too. Our expectations are, need to be altered a little bit just because of where they're coming in mentally and socially. So we have to take all of that into account when we attack what's the best plan to address the student situation.
Do you feel that the students in the fifth grade to sixth grade have transitioned well?
I do, I think they've done very well. What I'm hearing is that they're very social, I mean, I think that, you know, haven't been out of school for a year and a half, and so what I'm hearing is that they need a lot of repetition, a lot of classroom expectations repeating, you know, just, they're a little bit socially, emotionally behind in what we normally would see, but I think that's to be expected, and, but overall, really good, great, great group of kids, just, you know, just going to need a little TLC to get them where they need to be. But again, as I mentioned at a previous board meeting, that the additional academic intervention services that we're providing has really been key because we're able to close those gaps and put, put more kids in that, and it's helping them get back to where they need to be academically. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our reports, presentations for this evening from the superintendent, right? So we'll now move to discussion items. The first item is the, is something we do annually, right Linda, for the budgetary persons in terms of the transportation department, the school bus fleet, and then kind of what the status is, so. Linda?
Thank you, Mr. Buno. So I worked with Mr. Noeth, our transportation supervisor, to provide you with this update of our bus fleet. You know, our objectives with the bus fleet is, our main objective is safety, so we do have software in place that we can, that Mr. Noeth can track the, the bus fleet as it is, they can track their mileage, the labor, the inventory. I would like to also refer you to page two regarding our New York State Department of Transportation Safety Inspection Rate, which for the period of April one, twenty twenty through March thirty-first of twenty-one was ninety-six point eight percent. So that's a very good rate, and they, they continue to strive for the one-hundred percent inspection safety rate. On page three, starting on page three, just draw your attention to the fact that each year we plan to purchase eight buses, and that is a separate proposition that goes along with the budget, but it's a separate proposition to purchase the buses. And Mr. Noeth tracks our buses, what our needs are and what buses are ready to be traded in. So this year, in the twenty-one, twenty-two year, we purchased four sixty-six passenger buses, two thirty-five passenger buses, one thirty passenger four-wheel-drive bus and one twenty-two passenger bus. On page four is just our plan moving forward for the bus purchases that are intended for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. These are estimated prices based on what we know now, but these will, this will be part of a separate proposition that goes along with the twenty-two, twenty-three budget vote in May of this year. This report also indicates our spare capacity, our spare bus capacity, which seems to range between twenty-three and twenty-five percent. That has been beneficial to us this year in that, you know, being that we have a shortage of drivers, we have, we have had our mechanics out on the road driving, so we have had to use those spare buses as we go along this year. I would like to also point out to you that we have a bus purchase reserve that we've had for several years now, and this bus purchase reserve has created a funding stream for us to purchase buses. It has saved the district money because we do not have the interest expense associated with issuing debt, nor do we have the expense, the legal expense and the fiscal advisor expense that goes along with issuing a bond. Also attached is a listing of our, our buses, our current buses, and the asterix, the single asterix is indicating to you the trade-ins that are expected during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The double asterix is indicating the buses that are intended to be traded in the following year in twenty-three, twenty-four. As a brief overview, I'm, I'm one.
Yes? Are we looking at any hybrid buses, electric buses, green buses?
Yes, actually, Mr. Noeth was working on a hybrid bus plan just before the pandemic hit, so that did get put on the side for a little bit, but we are looking at hybrid buses, electric buses, gasoline buses, diesel buses, whatever, you know, we're looking at clean air emissions are a consideration. So all of those things are in the plan, but not in the plan for this next year.
So based on your question, Mark, would you like to see us expedite something? I think, I think we should, at least give at least one or two.
Price of fuel is outrageous, you know, diesel is outrageous. So, I, I mean, I would like to see us, you know, sooner than later, start to pursue these options. I believe it was, maybe not last year, but the year before, we actually test drove some at our bus garage, we had a couple come in and drivers tested them and we.
I'm going to ask Mr. Noeth, is he here with us tonight, and he can give us a little more information on that.
Good evening. So yes, we've, we've looked at hybrid buses, we've looked at electric buses, we've looked at alternative fuel buses. The, the alternative fuel du jour, if you will, has been propane. Electric is an up-and-coming technology. Our alternative fuel of choice right now is gasoline. Our alternative fuel of choice right now is gasoline. Gasoline is, believe it or not, it's cleaner than diesel. It's, it's easier to maintain a gasoline bus than it is a diesel bus, it saves us money. So we've been switching over slowly to gasoline-powered buses. The electric technology is, is, like I said, it's coming, but it's not quite there. You see it in a few school districts, I think Gilliland has one. There are other school districts that are buying a few electric buses, and as the technology comes up, price of the bus will come down. Right now, it's approximately twice the cost of a normal bus for an electric bus. So as the price comes down, we'll, we'll look into alternative funding as well.
Didn't we, if I remember correctly, we brought a couple to the district a couple of years ago to test, right?
So we, we have test-driven electric buses. We actually have a hybrid electric bus in the fleet, which we were able to obtain grant funding for about six or seven years ago. The bus performed well until the batteries died, and we, and the price of the batteries was prohibitive, so we've been running that bus on diesel power alone.
Yeah, we'd still like to see us pursue it and, and look into it, and we'll start to head in that direction.
For sure. We're, we're keeping an eye on the, on the, on the technology, and keeping an eye on the funding for it as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Just one observation, I did notice that you can do kind of a quick calculation on the, the bus purchase prices seem to be pretty consistent, Linda, in terms of the, the cost per, like this, for example, the 66-passenger bus, just a quick per-bus purchase, seems like they're about the same, so we're not seeing huge increases?
Not huge increases, but increases every year, and we basically deal with Leonard Bus Sales, and we have two types of buses. The manufacturers are International and TransTech. Those are the buses that we typically purchase. Another, Mr. Man, I just wanted to mention another thing, too, is in, as part of our capital reserve, we have the flexibility, the board has the flexibility in the funding amount, so that as we look at these more expensive vehicles, perhaps we'll look to increase the capital reserve a little bit more, so that we have a cushion for those types of vehicles.
I agree, that's a good, good approach, and there, I think there will probably be some money coming, in terms of incentives and, right, money to help support transition from cost saving, long-term. And the goal is to, I see, you know, looking at the fleet number, the international seems to be, have we seen, by being consistent in the purchases, the parts, anything like that, we've seen some. It's really about the consistency and keeping the bus manufacturer consistent.
Consistency, and yes, and we're able to repair and, and continue with our preventive maintenance.
That's correct. If we buy, we have all one type of bus in the fleet, one manufacturer, it's easier to buy parts, the training is simpler, we don't have to stock as many parts, and we deal with the same people, the same parts people every time.
One of the things I didn't miss about going to NISB is the bus people, we're always at the conferences, we always got a chance to see what was coming, and get a nice little bus to, but see the technology that was coming out, the safety features, the cameras, the things like that, and that's, that's too bad we missed that, those, like, they have good presentations, again, seems like a, but it's so important for a school district, the safety and the transportation for our students, and it's a big investment for the district, so.
Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to get back to that.
Be nice. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Linda. Any questions or comments on that discussion, but I, so it sounds like you want to pursue other types of fuel, alternate fuel, electric, whatever it is, at least pilot one, be more than that, and go from there. Next item on discussion is the COVID-19 protocols, district procedures, and then the county pilot for bus contact tracing. I talked to Mr. Simons about this agenda item, I really thought it was important that we have a conversation about, at least to get it out into the public about how the process and procedures work, how quarantine's working, also this new rollout of the pilot with the county.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. So I have a number of topics related to the COVID-19 protocols, and I'll start with the contact tracing. Contact tracing, since we first started dealing with COVID-19, particularly in the fall of last school year, is a shared responsibility between the County Department of Health and the school districts. And various times when the COVID-19 rates within the community spike and rise, it becomes more challenging to make sure that the coordination of the contact tracing is done between the schools and the county in a way that ensures that students and our employees who may have been impacted by a positive test result, that we are aware of that, and that those individuals are not in school. So the school district acts as a partner and really an agent of the county to protect our community. But the authority to quarantine comes from the county and is extended to the school district through notification that we receive daily regarding those students within the community who've tested positive. And then we contact trace within the schools to make sure that we identify those children who are under their guidelines, the county's guidelines, which are aligned with the state, identified as close contacts. This year, there was an exemption in the CDC and New York State Department of Health that exempted students who were in their seats in class with well-fitting masks and could be permitted to be three feet apart. So students in class generally are not quarantined, although there are some exceptions, depending on what is happening in the class. But we've had significant quarantines due to the bus rules. We've had as many as 18 or 19 children quarantined in the months of September, October, and November. If a student who is a positive case happens to be sitting in the middle of the bus, you're quarantining the students in the same seat, plus the students that are sitting two seats in front, two seats in back, and as many as four or five seats to the side because of the six-foot rule that was in place. However, since the fall, the school districts and the counties have been looking at whether or not students that are quarantined as a result of the bus ever become COVID-positive, and that number is about as close to zero as it could be. So we see no evidence of infection spread within our buses, and so we have talked with our county about that data, and our county had indicated that they would study it, and as of Monday of this week, in agreement with all the Rensselaer County superintendents and our County Department of Health, we are implementing a new standard for contact tracing, which involves ensuring that siblings are sitting in the same seats. That involves only quarantining those students who are sitting in the same seat as the case who are unvaccinated, and bearing the responsibility on the district's part to make sure that we are still applying the old rule, the old six-feet rule, and keeping a list of those students who otherwise would have been quarantined. And if we find that those students who would have been quarantined under the own protocol are becoming positive or symptomatic, we are to alert the county of that. And so far, you've seen the additional cases that we've experienced this week, but the number of quarantines that have resulted from those cases dramatically declined. So more kids are in school and in class, and we're, we talked about it today with the county. We're all very hopeful that this will continue to work, so that we can keep our kids in class. But the contact tracing, as far as who was in contact with a student in school, the, the large responsibility for that is on the school. We do, our principals do that work, our nurses do that work, in some cases, our central office, Marissa, is doing that work, and it is significant. And, but, but we don't make the determination of who is quarantined until we discuss the, what we find in the contact tracing department, issues with the county, and then the county says, yeah, that makes sense. Additionally, and related, related to our protocols, around September 28, New York State Department of Health issued new regulations that require school districts to ensure that employees are either vaccinated or are tested once a week. That particular mandate took some time to implement due to a couple of factors. One, the shortage of tests available to provide to districts within our region, and additionally, some of the logistical work necessary to ensure that we are able to determine which employees are fully vaccinated and those that would need to be subject to the testing requirement, as well as labor discussions with our unions about how the testing program would work. That process was completed over the month of November, and I'm happy to report that today was our first day of employee testing at Janay and Columbia High School, and it went very, very smoothly. And we're, we're grateful for the cooperation of our employees, and I want to recognize Marissa Cannon, who has done a lot of work to get this initiative off the ground. And when I say a lot of work, that's probably an understatement.
Thank you, Mr. Simons.
So, in regard to data, I initially reported to the board last week that we had a large percentage of our employees that was vaccinated, that percentage has gotten even greater. There was some interpretation of some of the information that we had sent to employees that they weren't sure what this was about. Since we announced the testing was going to start, we had additional employees submit verification of their vaccination. So I think out of our 800 employees, probably 700 or a few more are fully vaccinated. So our number of employees at this point that need to be tested is about 100 out of 800, so I think we're doing pretty well, that's about 88%. Additionally, point-of-care testing has been discussed. This is testing that will be available in the schools for students who indicate symptoms while they're in school. They can go to the nurse's office, and they can, if the family's consent, they can be tested in school. Point-of-care testing machines and one box of testing supplies was delivered about a week and a half ago to each of our respective schools. Our nurses have participated in training today, provided through the coordination of Questar Bosse's and Abbott, which is the manufacturer of the tests. We expect that additional test materials will be delivered from the county on Monday, and I'm anticipating that I'd like to have at least one meeting directly with the nurses, Marissa and I, and Kara Harrington oversees the nurses, to work out any logistics, but I would hope that we could potentially start that point-of-care testing and make it available on December 13th. One of the issues that we are discussing, we meaning all of the districts, is we want to make sure that our families understand the limitations of this testing. This testing is designed by the county grant to focus solely on those students who begin to indicate symptoms while in school. So under the funding that is provided and the parameters of the grant, this testing is not intended to substitute for testing a test center. So we are not a test center as a school. We can only test those students that become symptomatic and are sent to the nurse's office during school. We don't have either the discretion within the program or the resources, for example, to make point-of-care testing widely available for an after-school session or anything of that nature. It's solely intended, and the nurses from the county emphasize this point today, for those kids that become symptomatic in school and whose parents have consented. We cannot test any students who fam, whose families have not consented. Additionally, we have looked at the CDC requirements and discussed the athletic testing that has started in some cases in other districts. A majority of our board approved a requirement that our students that are participating in high-risk sports be vaccinated. The data regarding that is looking very good in terms of the participation of our students. We have lower numbers in modified wrestling, but we are able to field modified wrestling. I want to thank Anthony Servadone, our coach, and Mike Leonard for making an extra effort to go over to the middle school and to promote our modified sports. You may recall that modified sports was not offered last year in the winter, so some of the kids are, and the families are completely unfamiliar with the process. Under CDC, however, those students that participate in low and intermediate-risk sports, who are unvaccinated, the recommendation is that those students be tested once a week, and that would be the surveillance testing. We have approximately 43 students right now participating in low or intermediate-risk sports, which would be bowling and indoor track, who are unvaccinated. Right now, we are reviewing the consent forms that we received earlier in the year to determine how many of those students, families have already consented, and we'll be sending out a communication to the families to indicate our intention to have a once-a-week testing program for our kids who are in the intermediate and low-risk sports. And I'd like the board to weigh in on that issue. We think we have sufficient tests to do that, and Questar has indicated, because they're coming to our schools anyways to do the employee testing, they're coming to Goff on Fridays, and they're coming to the high school on Wednesdays, that, that student testing for athletics can occur during the school day and be done by our Questar team, doesn't have to be done by our own nurses outside of the school day as we had to set up in the fall. So, and I have verified with Craig Hanson that they would be able to do that, and I sent some of the numbers to Craig and the nurse at Questar today. So we do anticipate some of that testing getting off the ground that we've been talking about for both employees and students within the next two weeks. Spectator guidelines, we had a discussion about permitting spectators for our indoor high-risk sports. I've received some feedback from one community member that we ought to take a look at opening that up a little bit more. We had talked about four spectators per family and establishing a student section that would permit students to attend, to watch the games, and sit three feet apart. I've looked at what other districts are doing within the suburban council, some of the districts are doing the same, either three or four spectators per family, allowing some students, some are very open, no limits, others are doing a 50% capacity of the gymnasium. So I'm going to be looking at this and seeing with Mr. Leonard, whether, you know, how many people, for example, came to last Saturday's basketball game, was there more room, what was the social distancing like, and I will keep the board informed. I think a lot of families and parents and students and our board has recognized the value of what we've seen in the fall with our sports and the enthusiasm. Again, I want to congratulate the boys volleyball team for making this, but that, that level of enthusiasm of the kids and the families is kind of spilling over into this, and we want to do what we can to allow our families to watch the games and our kids to participate with the student body, but we want to do it safely. We want to do it safely, and we don't want to pack the house.
True.
Because we could have a situation where we have to contact trace somebody who was at the basketball game. If we have a full crowd, we might not be able to do that. We might not be able to do that with any level of confidence, and therefore, we might have to shut some of those activities down for a period, and we don't want to do that. So I did receive an email, could we open it up a little bit more? I'm willing to talk to Mr. Leonard about it, but I do think it's encouraging that, you know, there's a lot of enthusiasm around our kids and our families being able to participate in the sports this year. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Simons regarding, a lot of information covered there, protocols, contact tracing, quarantining? You wanted some feedback on the unvaccinated athletic testing?
Yeah.
It's about 40 students?
Yes.
In the midst of all that? I support it, I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't do it. Anyone want to weigh in on that? At least we know we're finding out about status, students, we get the consents, I think it's, it's something they should do.
It's comparable to what we did in the fall.
Yeah.
Well, we did it for both vaccinated and unvaccinated, but since the large percentage But since the large percentage of our kids are vaccinated and that all of the kids in the high-risk sports will be vaccinated or have a medical exemption or is a student that has a medical exemption, this is things that's into compliance with the CDC.
Okay. Now, do you think we just monitor it based on, I mean, the current situation and any changes there?
Are students in those sports, do they have to do the testing? I know you can't test somebody if their parents haven't signed it. Are they told that you need to sign that?
I'm going to weigh that. We did that with fall. I think we should do that. But I want to see, I've asked the, I've sent something to the administrators today to review the list of kids and verify that the vaccination status is correct and send out another communication through family ID that this is an expectation, asking those families who haven't consented to consider consenting. And then we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think with, you know, Ms. Barker talked about the ridership levels in tardies and drop-offs. I wonder with the change in the pilot, if we're see the reverse happen, more kids going on the buses. Hopefully with that data that we follow, we, yeah, keep our fingers crossed there's no, no issues there. Could you just speak to a little bit too, Mr. Simons? There's been some things about, you know, the contact tracing responsibility when there's an activity that happens off-campus.
Yeah.
And there's a, and a positive test gets reported to the district from the county, but it was an outside event.
Yep. So we have been, as a district, as have other districts, involved in several circumstances in which a student of ours is identified as a positive case. And then there, that student is determined to have been in an event in the community with other students that are from our district. That information can come to us from different ways. The parents, in the most recent case, notified us of the situation. And we consulted with the county, and we determined that who our students were that were there, I'm talking with the parents, and we made a determination to communicate with those students, what the county had told us is that they would need to be quarantined. This is happening across the state. It's happening in all of the regions because two things. One, we know the students. We have daily contact with the students and the families. And we're acting under the authority of the county and with the direction of the county.
Sure.
We don't make the determination that they're quarantined. We communicate that they are quarantined with a letter that has been provided by the county.
Right. Okay.
So is the letterhead, school district letterhead or county letterhead?
County letterhead.
And the county is asking us to mail these letters out?
The county provides us the letter, and we email it.
To the affected?
To the family, the parents, yes.
The people that have been told to quarantine?
Yes. And we verify the date, the dates, we had this discussion today with the county, the dates on which the student is identified as a contact. And the date, this is for outside events. And the date at which they can return to school is determined by the county. And we verify it, and we provide that on the letter to the parent, which is provided on the county's letterhead.
Because our role here and the district's role is to really be cognizant of the safety issues that could impact our school community.
That's right.
Really, the families in the community too. So that is important distinction there. And like Mark said, it's the county quarantine letter with the dates. So any other questions regarding the protocols and comments?
I wanted to ask about the point of care testing. So if a student becomes symptomatic during the class and they go down to the nurse, parents have consented, that student, this is what I'm understanding, that student would be tested in one of the nurse's offices? Is it just one of those rapid tests where they would wait for the result while they're still in the nurse's office?
It's a 15-minute, it's an Abbott Rapid antigen test currently. And they wait for the results. There is a, there is a misunderstanding about this, and I'm glad you asked the question, Jennifer. It doesn't mean necessarily if a student tests negative that they can go immediately back to class.
That's what I meant.
There is a, there is a protocol that was in place prior to COVID, which requires us to make sure that kids are not demonstrating some other contagious illness. So they have to have, the symptoms have to be getting better. They have to be fever-free without fever-reducing medication for at least 24 hours, and then they can return. So point of care testing will eliminate that one hurdle for the family of having to go get, let's say, go to WellNow and get a COVID-19 test, maybe in three or four days, get the result. They already know that that hurdle's been cleared, their child is negative on COVID-19. But the child may still go home, no longer fever, no longer indicate, symptoms are getting better, they can come back to school sooner.
Okay.
That's the intent of the point of care testing.
Okay. Thanks.
And to some degree, our nurses will be doing that. And if there is some kind of an alternative diagnosis on file, for example, if there's an allergy that's indicated by a doctor and there's something in file, then that's a different set of circumstances. They're ruling out COVID, but this child has another diagnosis on file. And then it becomes a, really a judgment call to the nurse.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good question, clarification. Any other questions or comments? Good. All right. Thank you for the discussion on that. And the item that was raised by our student council president, snow days. Let's have a conversation about that.
So I sent the board some information in my board packet. And since that time, I've done some further research that Ryan might be pleased about and as well as others. My thinking has been that, for the most part, we would resume traditional snow days. If the weather's bad enough to make it unsafe for kids and staff to come to school, we would follow a traditional snow day. But we have had situations where the number of snow days, which is five, in our calendar are used up. We have not had a situation since I've been here where, where we've exceeded five. So my initial thinking was we would follow a schedule that if we had to close and we got to three snow days, we may implement a remote day to preserve the potential for not exceeding the five days or having to use some of the days that some families and staff may have grown accustomed to, which is an extended Memorial Day weekend. And if we go over the five, it becomes spring break. However, in reviewing some of the information regarding the New York State Education Department's extension of the option to use remote days on bad weather days, there are some very stipulate, there are some stipulations that might be very difficult to meet. When districts contemplate the decision to close schools and pivot to remote instruction, consideration should be given to requiring students to participate in remote instruction at home where there may or may not be air conditioning, the availability of internet access, and consequences to the parents. So that part about consequences to the parents is an important consideration. Remote instruction provided under the pilot must be of the same quality and rigor as instruction provided on a typical day consistent with districts' instructional plans. This was not within the guidance last year. And as you remember, many districts had a hybrid model across the state. Part of that hybrid model was asynchronous assignments. So on our snow days, which were remote days, we did this because we were behind on the number of days because we started late. We provided asynchronous work electronically for the students. Students could access that work. It was not a complete day of work, and it was a modified expectation for our employees. It seems to me in reading this that we would have to ensure that what was happening on that remote snow day was almost identical to what would be happening in the classroom. And I don't see how you might be able to do that. And I don't know whether that would pass muster if SED were to come in and say, well, you had, you had a remote day, making sure that you met the same number of instructional minutes, the same model that you otherwise would have if school was open. So my thinking on this has evolved. And I think what I would like to suggest is that we have a backup plan. Because I haven't talked about this too much with the employees as well. And I would, this would be a modification of, in some cases, contractual expectations, that we proceed with regular snow days, but we have a backup plan that would involve remote days in the event that we hit the fifth day and need to preserve spring break. Because what happens on spring break, if you start, you use five days, and then you give up the Friday of spring break, you give up the Thursday of spring break, people are already on vacation.
They're going, yeah.
Okay. We're not going to get students in the classes, and we're not going to get employees who've already committed to, a lot of employees come back. So my, my plan has changed to having a backup plan in the event that we get, get the five days and we're in jeopardy of losing some of our spring break. We have an agreed-upon plan with our employees that I would present to the board.
Okay. So the alternative would be then we would, because they have a remote day, which then would not be a give-back day to shorten a break or extended holiday weekend or something like that, it would be a remote day instead.
Okay.
And I think as long as there's preparation, I think the biggest thing is when you, when you switch to a remote option on a snow day, depending on when that, you make that call, Mr. Simons, right? You're the lucky guy that makes that call.
For 3:00 in the morning.
You know, Chromebooks, preparation.
Yep.
Staff plans, things like that. It kind of, you know, the hybrid model, kids were used to, they always had their Chromebooks. They always logged, for the most part, logged in and were ready to go and took advantage of that pilot, I think, in this case here, as we're full in-person, unless something changes, you know? We are back to a more, quotes, "traditional" school calendar, snow days, things like that. And I, I like that approach of beyond the five.
The other consideration was we need, as you said, we don't, we don't, we are pushing and supporting in-person learning.
Exactly. Yep.
Our staff, we need more time to touch across with staff.
Sure, sure.
And we need to make sure that our kids and our staff are prepared in the event of doing that. And going out to the fifth day gives us more time to discuss it and be ready.
Feedback on that plan?
I was in favor of the original plan. I like the idea of trying to preserve people's spring break when hopefully the weather is nicer. With what you just read from the stipulations, what would that mean in terms of, you know, maintaining the rigor? Would that have to be remote yet logging in virtually and?
I don't know exactly what it means.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what that would look like. Yeah.
I have to get more information regarding, you know, what state would want us to demonstrate. I also have concerns about the kids being online all day. If it, if it had to be a, like a virtual live, Wednesday was last year, all day. What would the model be at elementary school versus middle school and high school? All of those things not only require planning input from our administrators, but input from our unions. And we haven't, we haven't fully explored those options yet because we've been putting everything in place to maintain in-person learning. So I, I don't know exactly what it would look like. We might wind up developing something and maybe asking through Dr. Cruz to run some things by SED and see what, what they think. Last thing I would want to have happen is we think we have a good plan in place. We implement it, and then Linda finds out that we don't get credit for the day.
Yeah, if the aid isn't.
And we lose the state aid, and then we all, we all are in a bad position that way.
Sure.
Last year, there was a lot of discretion provided to districts. That level of discretion is, doesn't seem to be there.
Yeah, I would imagine with the return to in-person learning across the state, there's much less discretion on what you kind of can't do.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. No more discussion on that?
We'll need more information.
Yep. Sounds good. All right, moving on from the discussion items to regular business. Approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments there? Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen second, Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. The next item is the resolution to authorize the return of unpaid taxes to Rensler County Treasurer. Resolution approving the tax collector's report for fall. Mr. Simons provided an explanation. Basically, what happens is the county makes this whole for those unpaid taxes, and it's their responsibility to collect those taxes from the community members that are, that are, have not paid. Is that correct, Linda? The simple answer, I guess?
That is correct.
Okay.
It gets reassessed on their property taxes.
Very good.
In January.
And it becomes our county responsibility and not a district responsibility. But, but to do that, we have to do the resolution to authorize that. So any questions on that? No? Need a motion to approve? Mark, I need a second. Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. The third item is the resolution to adopt the board goals and strategic priorities for 2022. We've talked about this a few meetings. Any final feedback on this? The one thing I would, and I didn't pick up on this when I sent the draft out, I would like to just make them bullets, not one, two, three, and four, Mr. Simons.
Okay.
So can we remove that? Because every goal that we stated there is as important as the other goal, and it's not to rank them or rate them. Yet they're all important.
Okay.
Any other final comments? If not, we'll move forward with that. Okay. So need a motion to approve that with the changes I suggested? Any questions? I got Kathleen second, Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports. We'll start with Marissa.
Not at this time.
Nothing at this time. Linda?
Not at this time. Mr. Pino, could we go back to the tax collection? There is a second resolution on there. The first was to return the tax, unpaid taxes to Rensler County. And then the second is to accept the tax collector's report.
Okay. I do see that the first resolution, as Linda said, a resolution to authorize the return of unpaid taxes. We voted on that one?
Yes.
So the next one was resolution approving the tax collector's report for fall 2020. One, I apologize for missing that one. Need a motion to approve that? Joanne, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you for the reiter, Linda. Back to committee reports. Jim?
Our Committee for Curriculum Studies met November 3rd. Thirty-five of our committee members participated in that particular meeting. Our five-year program reviews are underway. Music being facilitated by Scott Holiday. Library being facilitated by Caitlin Banks. And alternate education being facilitated by Brian Marsh. Kate Hastings, our new textbook and purchases and new course proposals were all due at our November meeting. Kate Hastings brought forth two books to support her Advanced Placement Literature and Composition Course. That course is a senior-level course. It has three college credits attached to it, and it runs for 40 weeks. The AP Lit exam focuses on diverse voices rather than the 20th-century canon classical pieces that are considered modern classics. The two books that she recommended were Homegoing and Their Eyes Were Watching God, both complex texts that focus more on contemporary voices and relevant experiences. I attached a summary of both of those books to the CCS minutes. I also have three of our English teachers here this evening, if anybody has any questions. Rachel Math has shared titles and a brief summary of six novels, which will be a focus of contemporary titles as part of the Literature Circles, which is in the seventh-grade curriculum. That is an effort to introduce individuals with more diverse voices and experiences. It is part of a student choice. So students get to choose one of the books that are offered through these six novels. These six novels were selected by seventh-grade teachers in the school year prior to the curriculum project. Prior to beginning the project, the teachers read the novels, checked Common Sense Media, Amazon. Amazon, Goodreads and the American Library Association websites to determine the recommended age levels and to select appropriate texts to support the seventh grade curriculum. When students choosing, when choosing the novels, they intentionally sought out contemporary books that would appeal to a wide variety of readers, seeking diversity in terms of character representation, topics addressed, text format, prose, poetry, et cetera, and reading level, so that all their students could find a book that they were motivated to read. So it's free choice. No student has to read about a topic that doesn't interest them. And before making their book selections, the students bring home a book menu with information about each of the books. They get to share it with their families and then select one of those six books for this particular unit. The way it's set up, unit structure, they run little literature, literature circles and self-selected research topics. So students meet twice a week in groups to discuss their selected common texts. It's very structured. Students meet with teachers at least two times per week to discuss the content of the book. And then students are assigned various tasks and that work was completed over the summer. Really thorough kind of instructional activities that are planned. And there's a final project also attached to that. So again, I included a brief summary of each of those six books, if there's any questions. Just finishing up the CCS minutes, under the new textbook requests, our middle school, Goff Middle School, science teachers have worked really hard over the last several years looking for an updated textbook. These new textbook requests would be made. And it, I attached the information, there is a new textbook request for grade six, grade seven and grade eight. Each of those requests come to about a little under $35,000. In addition to the science textbooks, our social studies department has also requested a new textbook. That new textbook at the social studies level is very important because it supports global history and US history, which has recently changed. So the instructional standards have changed and the Regents' exam itself has changed. So we knew it was coming. It's part of the planning process and it'll be part of the budget process, which starts this month. Any questions regarding any of the minutes for CCS?
Oh, just a comment that good to see that just the diversity of authors and text that you're considering. So I appreciate the staff looking at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Jennifer?
Yeah, I was going to comment that I think the English titles are excellent. And I wanted to ask in terms of the textbook purchases, are they doing like one class set that stays in and then are they also accessible online from home?
So that became very important. So whenever we look at new textbook requests, we're looking at digital access as well. So the textbooks, the requests for science and social studies, they both have a digital component to them. I, I'm not quite sure if I would recommend anything else. There, there's still so much about holding an actual textbook, especially in English. You know, we, we really want the kids reading an actual book. I know they have tablets and everything else, but as far as the content areas, that we, we look for digital access.
And I do like when they have the extra set where the kids can leave one at home and not lug the thick book all day. That's great.
Good comment. Thanks, Jim. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Frank. Turn to our last committee report to Mr. Simons.
Unfortunately, this week, we were reminded of the importance of having school safety plans with another school shooting in our country. So I first want to say to that school community that, you know, our, our support and our hearts are with them. In East Greenbush, we are very fortunate that we have great partnerships with our law enforcement agencies. And that's critically important because when there is an emergency, we want to be prepared. And so all along, our board has prioritized the importance of school safety. In particular, over the last several years, we've established such a good relationship with various law enforcement agencies that serve individual schools. East Greenbush, for example, Police Department with Columbia High School, Janay, Goff and Red Mill, Green Meadow with the Skodak Police Department, DPS with Nassau, the State Police, and really everyone with the Rensler County Sheriff's Department. Those law enforcement agencies have been involved in our drills. They put resources and time and personnel into working with our principals and our staff on the lockdown drills that we practice every year. They've been involved in evacuation drills that we have done in prior years. They go around to the schools in the summertime. They check to make sure that the equipment, the access to the building that would be necessary in the event of an emergency is established and is there. And they've been involved in giving us feedback on our drills and our new equipment that we put in place over the last few years has been critically important. So we had a meeting this year that we hadn't had last year because of COVID as a group, our total administrative team and law enforcement to just talk about various issues that have come up that we've seen in the emergency drills, issues that we need to tighten up a little bit on and to kind of do some action planning. Appreciate the principals and the representatives of law enforcement agencies being there. We talk about things such as doing professional development and awareness training as well for our families and our students. This particular meeting we had, we, I shared the data from Rensler County Prevention Specialist, Alyssa Evans, regarding the vaping issues that are being experienced. We're seeing an increase in the number of students that are vaping as well as utilizing other substances. And in part, we believe that is because of the shutdown last year and that in some cases, students may have developed an addiction. The law enforcement is also reporting at younger ages, students are experimenting with vaping. So we're going to be putting together some programs with law enforcement to educate students and parents about the dangers of vaping as we continue to investigate some of the vaping technology and other steps. The other thing we want to make sure that we do with law enforcement is that we thank them and we thank them because their visible presence in front of our schools at the beginning of the school day and the end of the school day is critically important. I think everyone has a sense of safety when they see the police officers out there in front of our schools and our principals and law enforcement are kind of on a, on a first-name basis, almost like we work in the same organization. So we, we're, we're trying to make sure that we, that we support the relationship, that we have good inter-agency communication and we're going to take some steps to tighten some things up and make sure that they have our safety plans and then revisit any issues that we might and have another meeting in the spring. Very grateful for their support.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Simons? Yeah, I'm glad we will have a replacement for Officer Russo has moved on and officer has been in place, he was a substitute and.
Yep. How's he doing, Mrs. Barker? He said, go get her.
Yeah, the school resource officer is a really critical piece. I know Mark, you were for resource officer. It's a, it takes a unique skill set and it's the training involved and engaging with students and being part of the school community is really important to help protect our students, but also to help, you know, alert some things that may be happening in their schools and make sure that our parents know that their kids are safe in our schools and there's somebody there as well with them from law enforcement, as well as our administrative team and staff to help in an emergency. All right, moving on to the agenda, table motions. We have none, all business, board members, anything? I don't have anything. Nope. Good. Moving on to consent agenda. So there's some tough ones in here. I'm looking over Mr. McHugh, he's not looking at me. We have a couple retirements of longstanding employees that really, you know, we know why, but we, we're going to definitely miss those individuals and their leadership. So with that, consent agenda and items A through F, any comments or questions? Yes, Mark?
D.
Item D?
Yeah. What do we, where? You were asking for authorization to increase the budget. Budget, the amount of?
In this case, we received $2,000 in gift certificates for Target. So that in addition to the $1,500 that we previously received, we will be working with the East Greenbush Police Department to, will basically be sending them a check. We will shop with them for families in our district for the holidays.
Well, you're, it says acceptance of gifts. I got that. And authorization to increase the 2021, 22, 22 budget.
Typically, excuse me, typically when we receive checks, we increase that. In this case, we don't need to increase a budget code. We're accepting those $2,000 in gift cards, which we have locked in our safe and we'll turn those over along with the $1,500.
When unanticipated, another way to say it is when unanticipated, like all the donations that we get, that's unanticipated revenue. So it's not something that we planned on. So you have, in order to spend it, in order to spend it, you have to add it to the budget and you increase your budget. It doesn't mean you're increasing spending. You've got new revenue and you've got to, you've got to have a space to put it in.
I'm sorry, yes. And, and so typically what we do is we assign all of our donations to specific budget codes depending on the purpose. So we increase the revenue side and we increase the budget.
Thank you.
So in the future, maybe we should have a clarifying, clarify that statement a little bit more about increase the budget by the amount prescribed, something that indicates that? Would that be acceptable, just to clarify?
Yeah, I just didn't understand what it meant.
Okay.
Increase in the budget.
And typically, typically on the, on the donation memo, it will have a budget code that we are looking to increase. So previously, I think we received a donation for the DPS gym turf mat in the gym. So we appropriated those funds directly to that budget code. That's typically what we do and you'll see that on the, on the donation memo.
Good with it.
Okay.
Spend it. Give it away.
Don't want that budget to go up too much, right? Increase the budget by. Okay, any other comments or questions on the consent agenda items?
Do we have to approve all of them?
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Joanne, second, Kathleen? All those in favor? Approved. I do want to make a comment now. I think that, you know, with Mr. Leonard leaving and Mr. McHugh and then Sanford, you know, the district has a lot of long-serving employees here that have given quite a bit to the district and we really appreciate your, your service. We know you're here to the end of the year as well, but I think just in recognition of all that you've done for this district, everyone who has given that many years of service, it's very much appreciated and, you know, in terms of the Central Advent team, we really appreciate you. When you took on this role, I think you've exceeded my expectations tremendously and I know that it's been, been wonderful working with you and the information you've shared and, and what you've done in terms of the district and the academic side, working with the team and the staff here. We really appreciate it. So thank you very much. And Phyllis isn't here, right? No, she's here. But same extent here, what she's done with the district as well in her long-term service. So thank you. All right, we do have two addendums to the agenda. Two are to addition for the the nurses. Right, Marissa, any explanation needed for that?
Yes, these are, we had two nurses that are in charge of our contact tracing. Mrs. Defricio is in charge of the K5 and Mrs. Seacor is in charge of 612. Initially, their appointments were through November 30th. So they have agreed to continue in this responsibility through December 31st at this time.
Very good. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? Joanne, second, Mark, all those in favor? Approved. The next one was a student who is going to NISBA. Right? Yeah. Good to see. Any questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, second, Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to the next item is new business and board members, anything? Kathleen?
I've actually got a question that was brought up by some things in the consent agenda. We okayed an overnight trip for Science Olympiad.
Yep.
And it's actually the same thing that I sent the email on today. These students are going on an overnight trip and will be staying with other students. We know in this particular case, these students have taken appropriate measures for COVID. I think as a board, we should be looking at something, if we're going to approve other trips in the future, we should probably have something established so we have an equitable policy for everything. I mean, we're, we're saying for athletes that, you know, the high-risk sports need to have, need to meet certain criteria. I think we should be looking at all extracurricular activities and coming up with some equal criteria for everything.
Okay.
So if we could look at that possibly for a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
That sounds good. Anyone else on new business items? No? Okay. Next item is the second public forum. Anyone? No? Okay. Board forum number two, I'll start at my right with Cheryl. Anything, Cheryl? Frank? Joanne?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Mrs. Sanford Krug on her retirement and years of service to the district. She's done wonderful things in the cafeteria and the kitchen. We appreciate that. Mr. McHugh, congratulations and we can't thank you enough for what you've done. Having sat on many of your committees over the past couple of years, I want to say firsthand that the energy and enthusiasm that you have has injected our community, our teachers. And there is no way that we can really thank you for everything that you've done for our children. You will be missed and thankfully we have you another six months, but we appreciate it.
Thanks, Joanne. Kathleen?
I have to echo what Joanne said, especially for Mr. McHugh. My son actually had him as a classroom teacher. So we've kind of gone, we, we've grown up together.
Many, many years, yes. And how old is your son now?
Mr. McHugh would rather I don't, not say that.
Jennifer? Mark? Shaking his head. Another time. Future discussion. I just want to again, thank the folks that were here for the presentation and the special educator award and the, and the staff and team again. Typically, we would take a break, have some time as a board to do some meet and greet, picture, things like that. And, you know, I think in, out of cautionary, you know, we just want to make sure that we're taking appropriate precautions and unable to do those things, but I noticed they took some pictures and I'm glad to see that. I hope we can get some of those things on the website and then we just share in their, their congratulations of the team and the special education department here at East Greenbush is, is one of the best in the, in the region, if not the state. And I think we take real pride in, in the work that they do and the involvement of the parents, the community for, for addressing those students with special needs. Much appreciated. With that, we do have need for an executive session for purposes of personnel and contractual items. We don't anticipate any other board business after the meeting. So with that, I need a motion to move into executive session. Mark, second, Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.